All right, we're all set now. Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Madison County Commissioners Meeting. If everyone will please rise. Jessica, would you lead us in prayer this morning?
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today and we thank you for the opportunity to gather, for the blessings that you've given our community. And Lord, I just can't help but reflect on the memory of Dr. Martin Luther King. Ask for your guidance. Help us to continue to live along the lines of his life. Ask for you to bless our community, bless this meeting today, and the work that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First this morning, we have approval of the minutes from January the 3rd.
Make a motion we approve the minutes?
Second motion.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Next, approval of the claims.
Make a motion we approve the claims?
Second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Under appointments, I would make a motion that we appoint Raymond Hyatt and Brian Bays to the drainage board.
Second the motion.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Any other appointments this morning?
Yes, to the planning commission, I would say we appoint Mark Gary, John Zimmerman, and Jerry Alexander.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Any other appointments?
We have another one. We need to do the...
It could be done today or later. There is one to the BZA from the planning commission and one to the BZA to replace Lisa Hubs.
Okay, so we need two there. I'm not sure. I guess I have not talked to anyone on that one. See if they were willing to do that.
No old business this morning, under new business, Aspire Indiana. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Julie Foltz. I'm the Director of Infectious Disease Services with Aspire Indiana Health, and I am here today requesting renewal for the county's syringe service program. I do want to point out, we do have a couple of our board members here, so I want to thank them for coming, and our CEO is here, and we also have friends from Indiana Department of Health who can help me answer questions. The program is set to expire under the current timeline with the county on March 2nd of 2023, so I'd like to request a renewal for two years. And just a little bit of background about the program, the goal of the program that we do is to prevent the spread of HIV and hepatitis C and other infections through safe syringe access and disposal. We do provide a safe, welcoming environment for people who use drugs to come in and ask questions, seek referrals, and get support. And so every time somebody comes in, we provide them with harm reduction education, offer them HIV and hepatitis C testing, and referrals to primary health care, behavioral health care, and substance use treatment at every visit. In the packets I gave you, there's a little infographic that talks about what we did in the past 12 months of the program. So in 2022, we saw 265 unique individuals, with 165 of them being brand-new to the program. 150 of those individuals that we saw either self-reported or previously tested through our program positive for hepatitis C, so we have 150 individuals that we served in the last year living with hepatitis C. We know that Madison County currently ranks 7th in the state for acute hepatitis C cases and 15th in the state for new HIV cases. And in the last year, we provided 54 new hepatitis C tests, and of those, we had a 27.78% positivity rate. For those new diagnoses, 40% of them were actually linked with medical care through our program to seek treatment for their hepatitis C. And so today, I'm just asking for renewal for the next two years for the program.
Jeff, was there any type of resolution that we... I think there was, at least in the past, something we put together.
I have another here.
Any questions? Is there anyone here to speak for or against the program?
As seen on... Hi there. Jeremy Turner, HIV STD and Hepatitis Director at Indiana Department of Health. Dr. Box is sorry that she can't be here personally today, but the State Department of Health prepares, you know, to stand by any counties that make the decision to continue these syringe programs. It's an important part of the plan to end HIV across the nation and our zero-as-possible-Indiana plan to end hep C and HIV. So if you all continue the program, we'll continue to provide great support to aspire and do everything the state can to help make sure that you continue a good operation. You do have a high amount of infectious disease here that has spread through syringe use, but we have seen those numbers improve since you all have instituted your program. So if this is right for you all, we'll continue to be there to help you.
Could you tell us, do you know what the improvement is?
I don't have it right in front of me today, but I can supply that to you, and we can continue to provide regular reports. Aspire is a great partner. We have a coalition-based model for ending the epidemic, and you all are really lucky to have Aspire here because within the region, they really are a leader that makes sure to convene the partners necessary to keep people healthy. And so we enjoy working with them on a regular basis on all the work that they provide for folks living with HIV and hep C here, just not only in Madison County, but really across north central Indiana.
You could send that to us. That is really the only question I had for you.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Did it entertain a motion to extend for two more years?
I would make a motion we extend the program, the HIV program, for another two years.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? Being none, those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in today. Jeff, we have two resolutions concerning tax sale.
Is Treasurer Gert still here by chance?
I don't think so.
He may need to provide some information on this, but you received from him, or perhaps from my office, through him, earlier this week, late last week, the... a resolution that we'll need adopted for the authorization of a commissioner's certificate sale for 2023. Normally, we get on this a little bit sooner, but for a variety of reasons. The tax sale date will be March... or the commissioner's sale will be March 27th through our normal broker, SRI. And I will find the resolutions. I could speak to him one second. You were sent a copy of Exhibit A. Those are the delinquent properties that did not sell at the tax sale in last fall. The resolution template is complete that you have in front of you. We also included in your packet your 2022 resolution. This would be identical to your 2023 resolution, should you pass it. Please note that on the template, we have not yet added the amounts, the minimum bids, that you may want to put in place. As just a reminder, at tax sale, a winning bidder must pay all the delinquent taxes to acquire the tax certificate. At commissioner's sale, though, they can acquire a tax certificate for a minimum bid, which bid is set by this board. On the... in the past, last year, the minimum bid for properties were $100. Except for ones that have been offered on more than three prior tax sales, you set the price at $50. You could certainly keep those prices the same, raise them, lower them, at the discretion of this board.
Do you have a question, Dan?
I just... he knows more about this than I do. It's always good to have that next to you. Yes.
If it's possible, we're trying to obtain the city auditorium for that date. If it's available, we expect it to be in high attendance.
Jeff, I don't see the same resolution that has the place in there for the minimum amounts.
Yeah, your template does not have that in there, so we would be amending that resolution to add the language that's in your 2022 resolution. The first paragraph would remain exactly the same. Your second paragraph could remain exactly the same, depending on what prices you set here today, if the resolution's approved.
What's the next resolution number? I would make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-BC-R4 by title only, a resolution establishing the intent to conduct a commissioner's sale to sell tax sale certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment on property taxes.
Commissioners, are you going to adopt the same prices as last time, or it's part of the motion?
That would be part of the motion. Okay, and I'll amend my motion, if that's all right with Olivia, to include the prices, the same as last year, $100 for those that have been on the sale over three years, and 50 for those that are two or less, I believe is what it was.
The other way around.
The other way around. Okay. Yes, the other way around. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. And so that covered the amendment to the... all right. Thank you, Jeff. So that included the resolution establishing the commissioners, both of those items, just to be clear. All right. Did we want to do this Vineyard Property next?
Another resolution that was sent to you late yesterday was a resolution... there is a small parcel on Vineyard Drive. I'm spacing on the street on the number 120. 120 West Vineyard in Anderson. The abutting landowner has showed interest and is represented by a local developer, has showed interest in acquiring a tax deed on that property. The property has gone through several tax sales, and the commissioners can make the finding that the tax... our tax certificate that we currently own, that's on that Exhibit A, by the way, so the motion would need to remove it from Exhibit A, from the upcoming commissioner's sale, could be offered to abutting landowners. Now, you're not officially giving the property away today to an abutting landowner. You are authorizing those abutting landowners to make applications in which they would either provide something written or come in front of you at your next meeting and argue as to why it's the best interest of the county to transfer that. But you are permitted that under the law for properties of this size and delinquency to transfer your certificate off to the abutting landowners. That abutting landowner still has to go through the process of acquiring a tax deed, which would give the current owner plenty of notice to redeem the property.
I have spoken on the phone to the landowner of the 120 West Vineyard Street property. He'd purchased... there's like a warehouse building there, and he'd purchased that through a tax sale. As most folks know, anything you buy in the tax sale, you know, it's kind of buyer beware. But he didn't realize that he'd purchased this property and really didn't have access to it. And he's wanting to update it, make it a nicer, more usable building, and desires to have this, which was always used as access to the property. I think that's how, probably why he didn't realize.
Financing can't be acquired with that problem.
I'm not sure anybody else, you know, would really have any interest in it besides him. So, you know, this is basically setting this aside, trying to make the sale work for him, so he can go ahead and improve the property. So I'd make a motion that we remove it from Exhibit A for the tax sale. Let's do that first. I'd just make a motion that we remove it.
Second the motion.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. And then I would make a motion that we adopt BC-R-05 by title only, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Madison County identifying vacant parcels of land on authorizing the sale of tax certificates thereon. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. And through that process, any other adjoining landowners would have the opportunity to bid on it, just like the individual that was affected. Yeah. All right, Steve, CASA.
Good morning, everybody. A correction, it's not CASA, that's another organization. We're Madison County Coalition Against Substance Abuse. And the reason I'm here today is normally we have a grant allocation committee that meets in December, and Kelly Gaskell was the commissioner at that time, and in talking with Rhonda, I guess Commissioner Pratt is going to be working with that committee. We're a local coordinating committee on the Governor's Commission for a Drug-Free Indiana. MACASA is a little different than some of the others, because we're a county organization under the auspices of the commissioners. And so with that, we are... MACASA itself is not a not-for-profit. We are simply a coalition in three different areas of prevention, treatment, and law enforcement, or public safety for the Governor's Commission for a Drug-Free Indiana. So with that point, the two other members besides... I'm a non-voting member, by the way. My job as coordinator is to make sure that the people that are putting grants in have met the requirements of our... basically our rules that we have, and that's attendance and all that sort of thing. But anyway, the grants are normally... the committee normally meets in December. We didn't meet this December due to conflicts, and because we like to get the grants out in like January, February timeframe. The thing is, once a grant committee has approved it, it then has to go to the county council, and then back to you guys, and then it goes to the auditor's office to cut the checks. The people that receive the grants in those three areas submit quarterly reports. I have to prepare a consolidation of those reports to the Behavioral Health Division of the Criminal Justice Institute. And also, an annual requirement, just FYI, is we also have to prepare, I have to repair, a comprehensive community plan that goes to the Behavioral Health Division. In other words, what are our goals of these particular organizations to address the areas of drug prevention, drug treatment, and obviously public safety. So due to the death of one of the members of our committee, and Kelly Lebien, obviously, was Van Hudson. Van had been a licensed social worker. He had been coordinator of the problem-solving... the original coordinator of Problem Solving Courts. Another person on that committee that is retired is Dr. Bruce McMurray from Anderson University, who was a professor in their Criminal Justice Department. So with that being said, as I understand, talking to Rhonda, that Commissioner Pratt is going to be the designated person to work with us, I have a suggestion that I would make. Hopefully, we'll have a meeting in the near future, but a person I would like to have as a committee, again, I'm a non-voting member, and I talked to him today, and he would gladly serve on the committee, is Chris Lannan. Chris is retired, but he is the former coordinator of the Problem Solving Courts. He's very familiar with MACASA and what our mission statement is, and of course, Problem Solving Courts has been a long-term member of MACASA. So that's kind of the update I have today. And so with that, I guess I would like to have a meeting with you, Commissioner Pratt, at your convenience, so I could bring the grants to you, I could show you what our comprehensive community plan is, and we could move forward. Because, you know, there's not enough money in this fund, and I might mention, this is not taxpayer money. This is money in a drug-free fund. It's... and just came from the auditor's office, and there's about $53,000, $54,000 in it. There's not enough money to sustain any of these organizations. I think one of the chief benefits of this coalition is that they share resources and information. But this is money that the courts had assigned by law to people that are convicted of a drug or alcohol offense. So it's not taxpayers' money. It's kind of an interesting coalition, because one of our members is the Alumni Association of the Problem Solving Courts, and then you have Madison County Drug Task Force there, and they probably arrested some of the people that are in the Alumni Association. But it's interesting. We meet the first Thursday of every month out at the dispatch center adjacent to the... right off Broadway there. And of course, meetings are announced, and they're open to the public. So that's all I have at this point.
Steve, one question. So is it Dr. McMurray that we need to replace then?
Well, and we're actually... I would ask Commissioner Pratt, if you all have any suggestions of people that you would like to add. Currently, I would like to add Chris Lannan and replace...
Got two spots then that are open?
Yeah.
Is that... okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, there's no set amount by our bylaws that we have to have anybody there. I think it's just helpful to have input from other people. In fact, Commissioner Pratt may have a nomination that she would like to put in there. But like I said, I've already talked to Chris. He would be a responsible member.
Okay. We'll let you guys get together and work through that, and then we'll come...
Pardon?
Just send me an email. Yeah, we'll get together.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming in today. Betsy Baxter? Betsy here? County engineer?
Good morning. The first item I have for you is the Community Crossings Grant Award. Last fall, last December, I guess, right before Christmas, we found out that we had been awarded $973,500 through the Community Crossings Program. That is to pave... it's half of the cost to pave County Road 50 West and New Columbus Road slash County Road 100 East, both from the city limits down to US 36. So today, I'm asking for your approval to authorize Commissioner Richwine to sign the agreement with NDOT regarding this. It's a standard NDOT agreement that we are not allowed to modify, as Jeff and I well know. And it's all done through DocuSign. Last... maybe it's two years ago now, we had a resolution put in place to be able to do this at NDOT's request, because this is how they are moving forward with all of their contracts now. Have any answer any questions about that?
Any questions? We just need a motion?
Yes, please. It's... I'm sorry, it's to authorize Commissioner Richwine to sign the agreement. Thank you.
Make a motion to authorize Commissioner Richwine to sign.
All right, I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Second item I have for you. Springbrook, the neighborhood that is in southwest Madison County, just south of where Summer Lake is. Lanar Homes is ready to move forward with Section 8. Section 8 is the final section in that neighborhood. And where this comes into play, we have two documents in your packet related to this. The first is the agreement between the developer and Madison County, the developer's Lanar Homes. And the purpose of this agreement is to establish basically the process for inspection and acceptance of the infrastructure that becomes the property of Madison County when the development is complete. We use Lockmueller Group to do our inspection on that, and that is actually the second part we'll get to in a second here. But I'd ask your consideration for agreeing to... approving, excuse me, the agreement between the developer and Madison County for the inspections. They pay us, and then we pay the inspector, if that makes sense.
There's no changes in this?
No changes. In fact, I believe they took the one from the last section and whited out the dates, so it is the same, though. I updated our signature page so that it had the correct people on it this time around.
I'd make a motion that we accept the developer agreement on inspection fees for Section 8.
Second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. The second part of that, then, is an amendment to the agreement with Lockmueller Group. As I said, Lockmueller Group did the inspection for Section 6 and 7. It really has gone well with the relationship between Lockmueller Group and Lanar. We've had some issues come up, like you do on every construction project, but they did a really good job of working together to resolve them in a timely manner. Everyone is very happy with how that process has gone, and we're pretty optimistic about how it will continue to go. This amendment is a $0 amendment because the... really, the inspection process went so well that they didn't need to use... so well that they didn't need to use anywhere near the amount that we had authorized initially for Section 6 and 7. So, this just amends the scope of services to include Section 8, and then bond closeout inspections as needed for the other sections. Again, $0, and this is a pass-through contract, so Lockmueller Group bills us, and then we pass the invoice on to Lanar. Lanar pays us, and then we pay Lockmueller Group.
Any comments?
No, I perused the-
Entertain a motion on the Lockmueller contract?
All right, make a motion when you approve the contract amendment with Lockmueller.
Second motion.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. The third item I have for you is an agreement with V3 to complete the Parks and Recreation Department master planning effort. If you recall, this is the final effort that we have ARPA funds appropriated for currently as part of the countywide master planning efforts that we are undertaking. This agreement, to give you a little bit of background, when we first started pursuing ARPA funds for this, we initially estimated $200,000 for this effort. When the ARPA process was proceeding, we had kind of a set amount due to the timing and the advertisement notification needs for the council meeting to make the specific appropriations. This was the one that got cut in order to make, within that, to maintain within that budget, and that was done knowing that we may need to go back for additional ARPA appropriation at some point in time. So, the way that the contract is structured is that there are three phases of work. The appropriation that we have currently is for $100,000, and that covers the first two phases. It does not cover the third phase. We're $50,000, $50,436 short on the appropriation. So, what I'm asking consideration for today is to approve the contract and authorize the first two phases, and then we will revisit the ARPA appropriation and request that from the leadership team at the appropriate time. And if we are granted that appropriation, then we can move forward with the third phase. If not, then we just don't move forward with the third phase, and that will be very clearly discussed with the consultant. The third phase does not, is not scheduled to start until late this year, so I'm not concerned about timing or anything like that. It doesn't slow, it shouldn't be a problem from a timing perspective, and it's dependent on the other two phases anyway, so it all comes together. Do you have any questions that I can answer about this?
I have none. Entertain a motion on the-
Sure. Little hitch in your get-along this morning?
I'm sorry?
Little hitch in your get-along there this morning.
I had to push my car Friday. Old men should not be pushing cars. So, the name of the company is V3, is that what you said?
V is in vacuum.
Oh, V3, okay. So, the other question I have is, what are the two first phases? Thank you.
Sure, the three phases, and I'll just jump through them real quickly. They have, they name them kind of differently than I would have named them because of the way they have their software tracking their work, the project management software. But essentially, the first phase is, hits on the general organization. It includes looking at the managerial options, whether it's a Parks Department forming a park board and so on. It involves data collection, which is what items or what facilities already exist throughout the county that can be collaborated with or connected to through this effort. And then it looks at the initial, takes the initial look at the community outreach and engagement. There's a survey that will be addressed, there are stakeholder meetings and different efforts such as that. The second phase, let me make sure I don't, first phase is called conceptual development. The second phase is the action plan. Nope, I take that back, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead here. First phase is the inventory, sorry, Ken. First phase is inventory, and that's the items I just discussed. Second phase is conceptual development. That's where they really start to put on paper some of the concepts of how we can have trail connections throughout the county, areas of preservation that would make sense for recreational purposes, really focuses in on the details of the managerial structure and starts to put some numbers to the financial considerations. And then the third is the action plan, and this takes the next step and really pulls everything together and works towards developing the overall master plan for the program that would be considered a DNR-approved master plan. That step's important, should we choose to go that route, because that will make the county eligible to pursue different funding opportunities through the state and the federal government.
And there are a lot of opportunities.
There are a lot of opportunities, yes.
Did we have a motion? No, I don't think so. I quit. I'd make a motion that we approve the V3 contract as presented.
With just the first two phases?
Yeah.
For now? Second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
And that's where the first two phases?
Yes. And then the final item I have for you is our annual bids. Just a quick update, we do have our annual bid documents on the street for the items, the material items that we purchase, which include asphalt, crushed stone, sand and gravel, and then tandem dump trucks, and compact dozer loader, is that correct? Thank you. Scott always comes up with some new thing for me to try to get up here and explain to you. That's on the street, those bids are due February 7th, so I would expect that we will open them in the commissioners' meeting that morning and read them. What I'm asking for consideration today is renewal of some of the annual bid items that are either carrying over prices or are more of the service-oriented. The first is liquid asphalt. Asphalt Materials Incorporated has been our supplier for liquid asphalt for a number of years. For the last several years, they've been the only bidder on that item, because others just have chosen not to bid. I have a letter from Nate Jenkins with Asphalt Materials that indicates that they are willing to hold their pricing for the next year, so hold their 2022 pricing for 2023. And so, I'm asking for consideration to approve awarding them the 2023 contract as well.
I'd make a motion that we accept Jessica's recommendation on oil from asphalt materials.
Second motion.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about the next two items together, because they're kind of interrelated and similar. We have a couple of on-call contractors. Two of them are designated for drainage and small structures work, and then two others are designated for bridge work. And for drainage and small structures, we use For Excavating and Duncan Robertson, and then for bridge work, we use Duncan Robertson and E&amp;B Paving. All three of those firms have been partners with us for a number of years. They're actually all in the middle of projects right now, and they are holding their pricing on those projects for us into the next year, and so I would ask for consideration on renewing both of those items as well.
At the same as last year's?
Yes. And just so you know, when we have a big project under that, we, a big project, a bigger project under that, we do negotiate an individual kind of price within their pricing structure to ensure that we're, that makes sense to go that way and not to publicly bid the item.
I'd make a motion to approve the request for For Excavating, Duncan Robertson, and E&amp;B Paving.
Second motion.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
And then the final item I have is for our diesel and our unleaded gasoline. For the past several years, we've used Coal Alliance. We did bid the project the last couple of years, and Coal Alliance is the only vendor who has met the specifications in the bid. We've received other bids, but they've not been able to provide what we've asked, or they've not been able to lock in the pricing the way that we've asked. But Coal Alliance has, and they've been a very dependable vendor for us even when things have gotten a little sticky from different situations. So, what I'm asking for consideration of is, we have talked with Coal Alliance about renewing the bid. They sent me pricing this morning on what the new prices would be. On diesel and winter diesel, regular diesel and winter diesel, the prices are slightly higher than last year's numbers. They're even slightly higher than what we had talked about last week, unfortunately. But on gasoline, they're lower. What we discussed was that if it's agreeable to the commissioners, we can lock in the pricing now, and then if diesel drops before our date, when this contract actually needs to take effect, then we can revise that number. So, the numbers right now that we're looking at for diesel is $3.93. For the winter blend, it's $3.97, and then for unleaded gasoline, it is $3.50, all per gallon.
But, you know, I asked you that last week when we were talking about it. What are the rules on taxes on diesel and gasoline?
And I didn't have that information when you asked. SMFT is what we're being told we're paying, 53 cents per gallon for the diesels, S-M-F-T, and 32 cents on gasoline, if that makes sense. I did look back through our past agreements with them, and from what I can tell, we have, at least as far back as I have, we've always paid it. But I don't know the details on that.
Well, that, I mean, that question kind of coincides, because I'd have a diesel delivery myself-
Right.
-for the farm, and so, you know, I was trying to compare those numbers a little bit with what they were adding up, and so, I'd kind of like to have that question answered before we-
Okay. Okay, we can hold off on that one.
Yeah, it shouldn't make any difference, I don't think. It's basically the same.
That's fine. We can hold off on that one.
Any other questions?
That's all I had.
All right, Jessica, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Plan, Stacy? Yep. Come on up.
Good morning. How is everybody today? Before you, you will see a contract for an additional module with iWork. It is a software program that we got July of last year for our permitting and receipting. Through the implementation state, status, we found out that there was not enough text fields in order to meet our needs for petitions. So, this would be an additional module added on to the current software for $2,500 a year for three years.
Been satisfied with everything else?
Yes. Still working out a lot of kinks, but it's going to work, so.
And do you have the finances available for that?
Yes, yes.
Jeff, you've looked at the iWork contract? This is just an additional, not an amendment to the contract, it's just an additional contract for those services.
So, this is a new?
Yeah, they're using it for-
I know that this part's new.
New, yes, correct. It would be new.
This is a free term, so-
Yes.
We're happy with that. Entertain a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion we approve this contract.
Second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Stacy.
Morning, Larry.
Hey, good morning. You all ready?
Yep.
Okay. We have three petitions this morning for rezoning amendments that are, is the authority of the Board of Commissioners to approve or disapprove, approve or deny these petitions. The first one is 2022Z011, Southeast Corner of 1550 North and State Road 9. This is a petition from Rhonda Hall and Todd and Stacy Hinton for a rezone of approximately 3.67 acres from agriculture to general commercial. The property owners are requesting a rezoning of property to allow the construction of a Dollar General store on the southeast corner of 1550 North and State Road 9 in Summitville, Indiana. The proposed retail store would be similar to typical Dollar stores found throughout the state and the country. The petitioners have stated that the project will involve a 10,600-square-foot retail building that will be used for general retail with a 43-spaced parking lot and appropriate landscape screening. The petitioner states that the development will serve approximately 115 customers per day and employ eight to 10 people. The, this item was first heard in November. It was continued to December to allow staff to gather additional information. At the December meeting, a passing vote was not obtained, and the matter was continued to January. In January, the Planning Commission voted to forward the petition to the Board of Commissioners with a favorable recommendation. There was substantial public input on the project at the public hearing portions of the meeting. Remonstrators spoke against the project citing the need to protect rural values, farm ground, and that this was not the right location for a Dollar General. Other issues cited include traffic, the possibility of crime, and the fact that Madison County has sufficient Dollar Generals. There also was public input supporting the petition. These cited benefits to Summitville and local residents. The staff recommendation for the petition was favorable based on the staff opinion that development trends in the area support the rezoning as reasonable growth and development. If the commissioners approve this rezoning, it is recommended that the condition be added, that future use should be only those uses allowed in the retail use as small and medium scale as specified in the zoning ordinance, and this condition should be recorded before a building permit is issued. I should note that Stacy Hinton is a part of the Planning Department staff, and we've been cognizant and tried to be as upfront as possible about that since the, really, since this started. So, with that, I will entertain any questions.
Yeah, please, Jeff. Larry, and help me with my memory on this. My recollection is that the Plant Commission added that condition you just spoke of to the commissioners as a suggestion.
Yes, yes.
They did, so-
Well, it was a condition, well, it was a condition on, it was a suggested condition on, in our, in my recommendation.
Okay, they adopted your report, if I recall.
Yes.
So, that is not a condition that the commissioners need to add necessarily, it would be one they would adopt, if they would pass.
That's, that's, yeah, that's true.
Now, Jeff, this is our first rezone of the year, and we have a new member on the Planning Commission, and also commissioners, and I'm always cognizant of trying to get it right, so I ask you about 10 times a year to make sure we do, but if you could just review that process for the commissioners, for, you know, Olivia and the board and the folks that are in the audience.
Sure. The Plant Commission is an advisory board to this body on zoning map changes. Any petitioner is entitled to a recommendation from the Plant Commission, be it favorable, neutral, or no recommendation, or unfavorable. In this case, it was a favorable recommendation, but the ultimate authority on any zoning map change is this board, the executive-legislative body of the county. The relevant statutes mention that the first meeting after the certification of the Plant Commission's decision is made is when the executive-legislative body should make that decision. However, there is no absolute requirement to do so until 90 days after you receive the certification, which was sometime last week. If you take no action on the rezone- This body does not have to do any of that. It can. It's completely up to your discretion on what, if any, additional record you receive or testimony you receive. But the public hearing portion of the, any zoning petition takes place at the advisory Plan Commission, who then throws it in your lap with a recommendation, which you may act on or not. Just for the record, this recommendation was with five votes positive out of the nine. Five, two, one, I believe is what it was. And we had a missing member at that time owing to a vacancy, which I think still exists. But, so, any, any questions on, on the process?
Any questions for Jeff?
I do have a question, though. Just, this is for 3.67 acres, correct? If I was going to sell off a piece of property for someone to build a new home, doesn't that have to be five acres?
Two acres.
How much?
Two.
Two?
Yes.
Okay. I thought five. That's the reason I was wondering the difference.
It was, it used to be five long...
I'm going way back, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was, I was on the Planning Commission the first time, and it was five. So that was...
Okay. Right.
I actually had a lot of hair and probably 50 pounds less.
That's what happened, we went to five to two. Okay. That's, that's my only question. I just wondered the difference, so...
Could we have an ordinance number, please?
One.
No, go ahead.
I'm kind of curious. I caught on to that, too. So two acres, but is that tiny, the sewer system of any sort, not up on...
No, they would have to get a variance. They have proposed to use septic.
Okay. I was wondering about the health department and the, is there a five acre rule on septic? Is my question.
I don't have the answer to that.
No, they'd have to go through the same process they did out there on Nine North, and there's not any septic right there either, so. Now, the public hearing's already been heard on this, as Jeff had said. This is not an ordinance that needs to be read twice, just one, one time. I know there's several folks here probably on this, so we could open it up for a public hearing portion of it.
But you can see a public hearing, just invite public...
Just invite public comment on this. So that's at the discretion of the board.
It's fine by me.
Okay. That is, that's fine with the board. Larry, I think at this time, we'll proceed to have anyone that has any comment on this ordinance.
Yes, do we need to have them sign something?
Not necessary.
Okay, okay.
If you would, just please give your name and your address. No need to repeat the same things over, over again. If we've heard it once, we, we got it.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Gibson. I'll be, if this Dollar General gets built, would be living right across the street from it at 15317 North State Road 9. The only new information that I really have, other than those same kind of safety concerns and whatnot that we talked about already, I did want to mention first and foremost that I did take it upon myself to start a petition for our local area, just to see what, you know, maybe others who didn't attend the meetings or didn't know about this felt about the building of this. Currently, that petition stands at 256 signatures. One of those was just during this meeting today. The comments thus far are extremely against it. I actually have a couple comments here that I wanted to read to you. The first one is actually about the Dollar General store itself. And I actually know this person. She was an associate of four years at the Fairmount location of Dollar General. And she says, and I quote, "I'm against this because all current local Dollar Generals can barely keep associates. Ours are not enough, and Dollar Generals frequently fall behind with product making for a cluttered, messy, empty store. We need to focus on the Dollar Generals we currently have but are losing. Dollar General Corporation cannot keep up with the rate of stores being built. No matter how they try to advertise, they can or are. There is no need for putting a Dollar General in between other Dollar General stores." End quote. There was also another comment left on this petition I found interesting, and I will preface this by saying this is a rumor thus far, but I've heard a few people talk about this now, and that the Circle K in town, which provides gas, it's the only gas station in the town of Summitville, to the residents, has, there's been a rumor floating around that they have said that they will close, leaving the residents of Summitville with no gas station. And I feel that having a local gas station is very important to them because I personally know people who, you know, run uptown and fill up their gas cans because they need it for their lawnmower or whatever it might be, short trips to the gas station like that. And then, a lot of people on here were just saying in general, like, you know, we've become accustomed to driving down the road a few extra miles to Alexandria or Fairmount to go to a Dollar General. Quite a few talking about how they moved here specifically for rural life. I know our neighbors across the way that own the large pond at the opposite corner of 1550 have said that they will put their house up for sale if this Dollar General goes up because they moved from Noblesville to be able to live the rural life. And I, myself, my family, we have animals, and that's our main concern is, you know, we already have people slow down outside, which is dangerous on the road on State Road 9. Looking at our animals, we've had people pull in, which, you know, you never know when somebody pulls in your drive what their intentions are. And so those are some of the main concerns that I've heard from, you know, those around us and the public. And my other big concern is that at the previous meeting, it was brought up that folks who use golf carts in town would use their golf carts and go to this Dollar General. Seems reasonable if it's in town, but there's a lot of semis that go up and down 1550, in and out of like R&amp;R, and to the ethanol plant down the way. There's constantly semis going up and down. And I have never driven a semi myself, but I can imagine it'd be quite difficult to see a tiny little golf cart in my way if I'm going down a country road. So, stuff like that, as well as, you know, just, I think last week, we had a wreck right outside our house. And that happens a lot. And I imagine with the increase of traffic and congestion in that area, that would, the number of car accidents would also increase. So I think what I'm getting at here is, you know, there's a big safety concern, and most of the residents that signed the petition and wrote comments are either residents of Summitville currently, like in town, or they have been previous residents. So I think it's really important to take in that consideration when you guys take your votes, because I don't feel that at the last meeting, when three people spoke against this and two people spoke for it, that our, the public's majority was spoken for during the committee's vote. So if you guys could just take all of that into consideration, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
I'm Deanna Stitt. I am the Town Council President for the town of Summitville. I came to the second meeting because the town wasn't notified of the first meeting. A lot of the people in town, it's not that they are against Dollar General, they are against the location of Dollar General. Having it out on Nine is not conducive to the people in the town. We've got a lot of elderly, we've got a lot of low income. We do have individuals that only can get around by golf carts and right now buy their groceries at Circle K. So it's not that we are against Dollar General, we are against the location of Dollar General. We think Dollar General coming into the town, and there are locations that would be good for a Dollar General in town. It may not be the 3.67 acres that they typically do, but I don't feel like it has really been looked at in the town. I was told that the president of the town board, which currently is me, ran them out of town. And, no, that, that isn't me. That may have been a former board member, but it wasn't me. So I would like to see it in town, because it would benefit the community to have it in town. I don't like the idea of putting it on Nine in an area that is rural. I mean, it's, it's farm ground, it's, and that's why we live where we live, is so that we can live out in the country. And adding a Dollar General right at that corner, what comes next? If it comes into town, the situation, which one of the managers at the Circle K had told me that they would probably close if we brought a Dollar General onto town, but I think we could work that out. I, I do support a Dollar General coming to Summitville, just not outside of Summitville.
How far outside of town is that, from Summitville to Nine?
If, it's about a mile out. The main street goes out past R&amp;R Engineering, and there's a split. To go out to where this Dollar General, you would be on that road, and it is a very busy road. 1550 brings a lot of the semi traffic into town. And if the planning commissioners, or the zoning board had actually come and, you know, just stood and watched for a day of what goes on, it is dangerous on that road. There's a lot of accidents out at that area. It's also one of the areas that we have our town employees go out and, once this highway goes through to Plow, we have our town guys go out and clear the intersections, because it is hazardous in the winter. We, we've been doing that, I know, for the last seven or eight years, because we've had a lot of people that slide out into traffic on Nine when they're trying to stop at that intersection. I don't know if the plan is to have it coming in off Nine or off 1550. Either way, it's not a great location for the traffic. We have a lot of accidents there. Anything else I can answer for you?
And I was on the Planning Commission prior, Olivia started this year, but Dollar General had stated that they'd looked in town for property, and, you know, they hadn't found anything adequate. In the one meeting, I think they were going to go back and revisit that even again. I don't recall what they, what they came back and said.
They haven't talked to anybody on the town itself. They've talked to the township trustee. There are locations, might not be the typical Dollar General location, but for the town, there's one location that the town actually owns that could be leased to them, like they're planning to lease this property, Dollar General's planning to lease this property, that would be conducive to the people of town, the people around town. We're used to driving to go anywhere. We pass everywhere, because most of us don't work in town. We drive Anderson, Muncie, Marion. So we pass a lot of places on the way. The Dollar General at that location would not be a, it would be an afterthought. If it was in town, it would be a destination for people. I mean, if I'm on my way home from work, I'm going to pass three Dollar General, four Dollar Generals before I get from my office at the hospital to my house. So having that on Nine, it's just another one we're going to pass. If it's in town, and there's locations in town that we could, we could work with them on to make it work for them, it's just a matter of whether they really want to benefit the community, or if they just want a Dollar General in that area.
Thank you. And Larry, I think the interest was off of 1550 in their plan, wasn't it?
Good morning. My name's Andrew O'Sell with AR Engineering. I'm representing Hinton and Hall, the sellers, as well as the prospective buyer of this tract. I know Commissioner Pratt was at our last Planning Commission meeting, and Commissioner Rich Wein was at the previous meeting. Just to reiterate, I know it was said at a couple of the meetings, but I know that the Dollar, Dollar General name is out there, and everyone knows what it is, but this is specifically for a rezone from ag to general commercial. So we really have to look at the use there. And I know a lot of the, the different, you know, pros and cons have been brought up for each side. So I just ask that you consider the, the use versus this specific use, because typically when we go for a rezone, we don't specify the intended, it's, it's that specific zone. And then, as far as the town locations, we have looked since that initial meeting in November, we had looked at three or four properties that were, excuse me, that were mentioned to us. One is right there in town, although it looks to be big enough at only about an acre. We approached the seller of that, and it's just considerably costly, three to four times as much as, as we would pay for the site, a typical site, and you would have to tear down the building. We looked at a couple other vacant lots, which were too small in the area. And then the, the town's property, that's, I don't know, maybe three eighths of a mile east, that's off in the main drag. And, and it's just, I mean, it's the same as being out, you know, a little bit further out on the highway where you can capture that traffic. That's, when they do their market study, they look at rooftops and traffic counts to drive those store numbers. So we've, for the past three months, we've looked at several different options in town. And then, from what I'm hearing today, having it in town would be adverse to the Circle K. You know, depending on which side you're standing on, you could say, okay, competition is good for the local community and to help drive down costs, but having it out on the highway, you know, could create as much separation there as possible so that you still have business at the Circle K and they still provide gas, so. And then thirdly, I just asked, we heard a lot of hearsay today about, you know, the Circle K going out of business and people putting their house up for sale. So I just ask that you don't weigh that hearsay in on your, on your decision today. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
But there is not an entrance off of Nine?
Correct.
That wouldn't be a proposal at some point, to do that?
No. With the proximity to the intersection there, DOT will not allow a curb cut there. They prefer that it come off from the side road, in this case, the county road. And, I mean, Larry knows, but we've done quite a few of these, and nine times out of 10, we're coming off from the side road to consolidate that traffic to one intersection there. It's not, it's not atypical to, to have that come off the side road.
And you think 3.67 acres is enough, please?
Thank you. So our, our standard size of parcel is an acre and a half to two acres. In this situation, we, as the designer, are fortunate to have more, more property than we're usually dealt with. This site has some topography challenges, and like Larry said, we have well in septic on the site, so that allows for, for all that to remain on site. And then, you know, the standard parking lot and, and store size.
You've got a lot of hard surface, so you'd also have, may have some type of detainage that you have.
Yeah, we'll have a, a pretty, a pretty large detention basin to control the storm water. We're usually about seven tenths of an acre of impervious area or paved, paved in rooftop area. And then the rest of the site is impervious, which is, you know, lawn, grass.
Any other questions?
Thank you. So, and then thirdly, I just asked, we heard a lot of hearsay today about, you know, the Circle K going out of business and people putting their house up for sale. So I just ask that you don't weigh that hearsay in on your, on your decision today, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
But there is not an entrance off of nine?
Correct.
That wouldn't be a proposal at some point to do?
No. With the proximity to the intersection there, DOT will not allow a curb cut there. They prefer that it come off from the side road, in this case, the county road. And, I mean, Larry knows, but we've done quite a few of these. And nine times out of 10, we're coming off from the side road to consolidate that traffic to one intersection there. It's not, it's not atypical to have that come off the side road.
And you think 3.67 acres is enough?
Thank you. So our, our standard size of parcel is an acre and a half to two acres. In this situation, we as the designer are fortunate to have more, more property than we're usually dealt with. This site has some topography challenges and like Larry said, we have well-inseptic on the site. So that allows for, for all that to remain on site. And then, you know, the standard parking lot and store size.
You've got a lot of hard surface, so you'd also have, may have some type of detainage that you have?
Yeah, we'll have a pretty, a pretty large detention basin to control the stormwater. We're usually about seven tenths of an acre of impervious area or paved, paved in rooftop area. And then the rest of the site is impervious, which is, you know, lawn, grass.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kendra Anderson. I just live south of where the potential Dollar General will be on 14659 North State Road Nine. And I obviously am opposed to the Dollar General location as well, you know, for many of the reasons that Caitlin had addressed with the safety issues and, you know, other things. But I just, I just ask that you guys consider that, you know, we do want to keep this a rural community. Summitville is a town, but we're a very small town. I mean, people joke about, oh, you can blink through it because it's so small. So having a Dollar General, it would benefit the town tremendously, you know, being in competition with Circle K. It is a small town, so for them, competition might actually put them out of business because it is such a small town. But I do ask that you take into consideration that, like I said, most of the community and residents of the town would like to see it there, just not at the location that it's at. And this is all hearsay, which, you know, I know hearsay can be, but it has been brought to my attention that farmers have offered to buy the land just to keep it rural because they don't want to see a Dollar General go in that area. So kind of throwing a last little Hail Mary here, I heard you say, you know, earlier that you have a farm. So I just ask that you kind of put it in your own, you know, situation if you would like a Dollar General across from your farm. So, sorry. Thank you for your time.
Hello there. David Benefield, I'm with the MPO. We're a primary regional transportation agency, so we wear many hats. You know, as Council of Governments. But I wanted to say on this, this is the first I'm hearing about this project. We normally work with plan commissions, departments throughout our area, and we do work directly with NDOT to talk about driveway permit requests. We issue technical memos stating what our standards are based on traffic and issues that we may see in a situation. So we, I will definitely be following up with them to see if something has been submitted to them, to see where they're at, and make sure that we get something on record from our agency to NDOT on this subject. Because yes, I would say if this does happen, you know, that's not necessarily my interest. My interest is, or our interest is the traffic and what might happen there as far as safety. So we will, just want to let you know that we'll probably look into that. So, but yes, this is the first time I'm hearing about this potential development. Anytime it's on a state road, obviously it's of concern to us. So just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
Well, my name's Chris Austin. I live three tenths of a mile east of the proposed site. The gentleman there, the engineer, has given all the information. He said they addressed Summitville. One of the sites was above the cost for what they wanted to put in. This would be the fourth Dollar General in 10 and a half miles. 10 and a half miles, the fourth one. They can't spend a little extra money, move it into town where it's going to benefit more people. It will benefit the people of Summitville. Will Circle K go out of business? Who knows? They sell gas. They sell enough pop. I know there's people constantly in there to buy pop. Would Dollar General actually close Circle K? But they don't want to spend a little more money to benefit the people that really need it. They want to put it out in the middle of no place as an eyesore. People go down the highway, says, what did they put a Dollar General here for? There's nothing here. There are a lot of people who don't even know where Summitville's at. So that's, that's my thoughts. It's just upsetting to know that there's a possibility of a retail store going down to end our road. Again, State Road Nine, there's a hill to the south, traffic constantly, semis, all times of the day. It should be a consideration. Thank you.
My name, excuse me, my name's Ralph Gordon, and I live in Summitville. And I am one that would like to see it in town, but I actually got to tell you, by not receiving a Dollar General, I don't think that's a good thing for the town. We need more business. We need to start developing Summitville as a community, not to let it deteriorate. We've got a lot of opportunity here to help the community, and that's what I'm saying. You know, I understand the concerns, not wanting it across the street. I understand the concerns of safety, but I really don't think that will be a concern once it gets there. So I'm asking you to consider the people of Summitville, consider the town that is just almost gone now. So that's, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is DeAimus. I'm Van Buren Township trustee. I am for the Dollar General. I apologize that my neighbors are not and that they're upset with me because I am in favor of it. Each has their own decision. But I, as a township trustee, I see a lot of people come in my office, needy families. So I see it firsthand. And I know a lot of them say, well, they work out of town, this and that. A lot of them aren't working. And so this would be a very close location for them. Granted, we've tried to get it downtown. And just like Ms. Andrews said, that, you know, I've even talked with the property owner, and he honestly, he was just trying to make a fast buck because he knew of the company trying to come in. He had outpriced that building so bad. And I had worked in that building for almost 15 years. So I know what that building's worth. My father-in-law used to own it. So with that being said, it was just, and I tried to talk to him and tried to reason with him because our citizens could really use this. We need something for our, our community. We really do. And I'm, I'm a business owner myself in Summitville, and I put it in, I just, to help the town, you know? This is kind of my way and my husband's way of giving back. And so that's kind of what we've decided to do, and that's why we're there. But I just really ask that you consider the, everyone as a whole and not just the ones surrounding that area, the whole community as itself. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I'll try to make it short and sweet, sorry.
That's all right.
My name's Leslie Gibson. I'm Caitlin's mom. I live, we live right across the street from there. We are not opposed to a Dollar General in Summitville. We just don't want it right across the street from us in a field where it's all rural. We've lived there, I have lived there around 30 years. That intersection, I know you've heard this before, but we have been right there and that there's so many accidents there when it's, when it's icy. When you're coming from Alexandria, that hill, if, if you could take a drive and look, you cannot see the intersection. And my house is right before the intersection. You can't see it until you get to my house, if there's any traffic stopped or, you know, if there's anything going on there. Same way from the other way, it's hard to see. Again, I'd like to, we do have 256 signatures on the petition for people, from people around there that they are not all opposed to a Dollar General in Summitville. They just don't think it needs to go there. One of our concerns is the rezoning from ag to commercial. What's that going to open up after the Dollar General goes in there? What else is going to go in that field across the street? We just think that there's more research that can be done before setting this rezone in place. There's an old barn just north of, on 100 on the same road that's fallen down that, you know, the property owners, I don't know if they've been talked to or not. It's got plenty of space for a Dollar General down there. It's right close where people could get their, on their golf carts. And another thing we want to reiterate, if, if we want to develop Summitville, we need to be able to put in more smaller businesses in there instead of a big business that's... If you've been in Dollar Generals lately, they're all a mess. That's just one of our big concerns is how, what's it going to be like over there once they build it? My daughter just had somebody pulling our driveway the day before yesterday. She had her horse out in the yard and they pulled in the driveway to see the horse. This is just going to create more people coming by, more people gawking at our animals. If somebody robs the place, where are they going to go? They're going to go to a barn to hide. The safety of my kids is really important to me. So I just really, I want you guys to consider all options before saying yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll go ahead and close the public input portion. Before us is ordinance number 2023-BC-01.
You know, weigh on anything from NDOT if he was posing or?
He could, I'd ask David if that was a concern.
Were you, were you saying we would need to wait on a report from NDOT?
No, there's no, no, I don't, I don't know. I think they said there's no driveway permit request.
Okay.
Just the discussion that we were having and kind of the conversations we've had previously about the driveway. When I first saw the proposed layout, my initial thought was the driveway should be off of State Road Nine, simply because County Road 1550 in that area is not what I would consider ready for that type of a driveway. As we dug into it and again in talking with Dave now, bringing it off of State Road Nine is probably not the best approach because of the, how close it is to the proximity to that intersection and other configuration concerns. We don't have good traffic counts in that area at this time, but that is an area that the MPO and others are watching. We just don't have the data right now. As far as that goes though, and we made it clear during the initial review of this, the technical review committee, there needs to be some work at the intersection in order to be able to accommodate that driveway and Dollar General. I don't see that from an engineering perspective as anything that is insurmountable. And we had those discussions with their engineer, and I think that's certainly something we can work through. It's just a matter of determining the right configuration. We likely would need to look at a way to restrict trucks from going east. I believe right now there is a sign that says no trucks that direction because of the location proximity to the ethanol plant, but I don't know that there's any sort of ordinance to back that up. We have been working with Mike Warner at the Sheriff's Department to try and tighten up our ordinance related to weight restrictions and truck restrictions. And I think we could certainly look at applying something similar to that area if this progresses. So from a traffic standpoint, from a road standpoint, there's things that need to be addressed, but nothing that's insurmountable from my perspective.
To answer your question, Olivia, so what we normally do is we've been working with NDOT to kind of review all these driveway permits that are, you know, requested throughout the county and our area. We just, we issue a technical memo, we look at the crash data, we look at the traffic count data, you know, we discuss that, you know, with others about, you know, what's going on there as far as development with the planning departments. And we kind of issue our statement based on what we see, you know, so that we don't create a new problem or add a problem that's already on top of another problem, like Jessica's saying. So yes, the weight limit is the truck, traffic, you know, access onto nine or 1550, you know, those are all things we would look at and issue. So we could provide that, you know, we can definitely provide that back to you, that report when we get issued to NDOT, and we can give it to Larry as well and Jessica, just so everyone has kind of what our standpoint, the broader look at everything. We're not really looking at what goes, what develops there or how it's developed or if it's in town or out of town. That's not really our concern. It's really about the safety, traffic safety issues there. So that, you know, regardless of what happens there, whether it's new homes or whatever. And Jessica is right, I think it was discussed, NDOT does have some kind of limitations on how close you can have a driveway cut off of a, you know, that's right before an intersection that intersects with a state road. So there are, there are some guidelines there in their, in their manuals, and they are refining their process right now and, because they used to issue just whatever all the time, and they're limiting that a lot more now. So we definitely have been working with them. I have a meeting later with them today. We normally talk about these types of things, so I'll be bringing it up then. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you, David.
Can I, just one more thing in regards to that?
Quick, yeah.
Okay, you talked about restricting traffic down 1550. We have STS, who requires semis, R and R Engineering that requires semis. You cannot, 1650, if you come in that road, you cannot make turns with a semi to get to either one of those businesses. So if you take traffic off of 1550 for semis, that's going to be a real issue for the town, or for the semis that come through town. We've, we've got traffic block at 1650, which ends up being Walnut Street and Main when it comes into town. It is such a tight corner. We need 1550 for semi-traffic. GPS right now is running all of the semis coming through the country, and they're getting stuck uptown because they can't...
They get stuck all over the place.
Yeah. But this, this is a, this is a, like hit a building kind of stuck. So just if they're...
For me, it's usually up against a telephone pole.
Yeah, the telephone poles here and the nice little street lamps.
Not me, me trying to be a nice guy and help them out of the ditch.
Yeah, they're, they're coming down Walnut Street in front of my house, which is a new thing. It's like, and one day he's sitting in there and I just, I'm like, can I help you find something? And he's like, I'm trying to get to, and I'm like, okay, well, you're going to have a hard time getting there this way because you just can't make those turns. So if that's a consideration, please keep that in mind.
But this time we could entertain a motion for approval or for denial. Could continue, there's a load of different options. Not doing anything's the same as an approval, though. It becomes the same as approval after 90 days. After 90 days.
So I guess my question, excuse me, question is what's going to, would change between now and if we continued it? I mean, what would change to make, make the difference to what you, what you're thinking? I mean, I guess it's, it's just prolonging it?
Probably not.
Yeah, I'm not sure that anything changes, but, but I've just threw that out there as one of the, as opposed to in 90 days, it just...
So I know I've talked to people on both sides, and I think both sides feel pretty strongly about their stance on this. And I drove up there on Sunday to look at it, and I think it is kind of an important note, we're simply voting on the rezone, not necessarily what gets placed there. So I guess with that, I would make a motion, we approve ordinance 2023-BC-01.
I would second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Those of you that were at the planning commission meeting, I abstained in that meeting. I told you at that time, my, my reasons for that probably weren't going to change for any between now and then. So that, that still is, is the same. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lichten?
Yes.
Commissioner Pratt?
Yes.
President Richwine?
And I abstained. Motion carries. Larry, number 12?
Okay, number 12 is petition 2022Z012. Laura Rich, 2135 North Scatterfield Road, Anderson. This is the corner of Scatterfield and Alexandria Pike, Scatterfield Road and Alexandria Pike. Ms. Rich has .3 acres that she wants to rezone from residential two to multifamily residential. She wants to put three additional apartments in the building. It's a building that was a former business that she operated for many years and has been oper, has, has, after closing the business, she tried to sell the property, but the right situation did not occur. She has, currently has one apartment in the building and has proposed to add three, three more, which requires this rezone. The staff recommendation, based on the information provided in the public hearing, was favorable, was forwarding this petition to the commissioners with a favorable recommendation, which the planning commission did adopt and did. There are no conditions for approval, so this was a recommendation to approve this rezone. I believe Mrs. Rich is here, I'm not sure.
I didn't see her.
Okay. She has been at the previous meetings.
So that would make four apartments in that building?
Yes, and she's aware that she would have to go through the state and get approvals.
But I guess I was wondering about the parking, there's enough...
There is enough room for parking. She submitted a plan and we reviewed it.
And there's some other rentals in that?
There's one current building. Oh, in the area?
Well, right, yeah.
Uh, there, it's, it's, there's some residential, and there's some floodplain across the road, and there's some businesses. It's kind of a mix of everything around there. It's R2 right across, it's R2, I mean, it's an R2 residential neighborhood, so...
It, it's not an unusual request, I guess.
No, no. There was no remonstration to this proposal.
And it's number on this one?
Number two.
I would make a motion and we approve ordinance number 2023-BC-0-02.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. The third petition is 2022-Z013. This is at 2206 South Range Line Road. Robert Martindale is the petitioner. Mr. Martindale is here today. He is, Mr., the petitioners are requesting a rezoning of the property to allow for the continuation of use as an RV park at 2206 South Range Line Road. It had formerly been a mobile home park, and as the mobile homes, as Mr. Martindale removed mobile homes, he's been substituting RVs there. We did look at the site and subject, and sent, get, presented this to the planning commission. The planning commission has approved this, or has recommended forwarding it to this board with, with a favorable recommendation for approval with a number of conditions, which are, which I'm going to... The first one is, and this was reworded a little bit from the original conditions from the staff, but any mobile home on the site other than one at the back must be removed at the expiration of the current lease. There are two current mobile homes on the site. The one at the back is one his parents owned and used and lived in, and he wants to retain that, possibly use it as an office or other things. There is another mobile home out on the property that's currently under lease, and we've, we're stating that as soon as, when that lease expires, that mobile home needs to be removed, which I think he's comfortable with that situation. So the other conditions related to just having the petitioner work with the county to determine if there is any need for feasibility of a second drive. And then finally, that as these RVs and any future buildings are put into place, this isn't a floodplain, and he needs to meet with all DNR floodplain requirements, which he's aware of, and I've talked with DNR. So I think everything is set to go.
So are these like permanent RVs or?
No, they'll be an RV park, there'll be RVs. Our code states that, you know, an RV can only be parked for eight months out of 12 months at any one location. So there are constraints on that. I can't tell you how we would enforce that. I mean, if somebody decided to camp out there for three years, you know, we'd probably, somebody would complain and say, you know, there's, I don't, I don't know, but that's the stipulation. So it's an RV park. Our code has a specific designation for RV parks, and we would make sure that this follows that.
Probably nobody's even going to know, ever notice.
He'd be surprised what people notice. People notice everything.
Any other questions for Larry? And this was unanimous as well from the?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2023-BC-03 by title only. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you. David? Are you here for TRAM?
Yeah.
All right, I just have one item for you to sign today. This is a de-obligation letter. This is from the CARES Act from when COVID started. This is for, through the Office of, NDOT Office of Transit for the TRAM service. We received a certain amount of funds, but if you don't have enough funding, you know, you, you don't have enough costs to cover what you got, we have this leftover money. It's $85,000, but we can't use it on anything except for operating, and it's now come to the end where we have to. So this is kind of the final check thing that you got to sign off, say, yes, we're sending it back to FTA, you know, for that. So that's, I have a copy of that. I just need a signature in blue ink, like normal for NDOT, and that's all I need today. So, and you're the signer, John, so on that, so that's all I have.
And I don't know what...
We did have a staff report. I think he, I don't know if he stepped out or left or not. Mark was here. He's our, he's sure, contractor service provider and the transit coordinator. I believe he's, he's presented before. I don't know if he had to leave or not. He managed to get back to drive buses.
I make a motion that we accept the grant closeout.
Second motion.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You guys got a copy of this already that you can sign?
I think so.
Okay, great.
And then do we, is he going to come back or?
I don't know. I don't know if he texted me. I'm going to step outside real quick, but I have, I don't know. He may have had to leave because obviously we're having a long meeting today.
In the meantime, we've got a memorandum of executive session from January the 3rd. Basically, that just states that at the January 3rd executive session meeting, we discussed only what was advertised and, and nothing else. I'd make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
Those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We give David just a second here.
He may have went to go lunch.
Don't blame him. Okay, that's good. Anything else? Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.